Councilwoman Lemon Mozik, issue one. As the record reflects, she's absent. Councilwoman Michael Wade, issue two. Councilwoman Dudley Calvert, issue three. Councilwoman Corlette Sanford, issue four.
Present.
Councilwoman Patricia Jenkins, issue five. Also, we have President Doug, uh, Street Supervisor, Superintendent Lee Wells, Chief of Police, Chief Mills, and our official general, Anthony New, etc. Next, we have a motion to approve May six, outside of thirteen minutes. After viewing the minutes, if you don't have any questions. Second, about six. All in? Sit. All in favor of state by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, at this time, we got a couple comments. We got a couple coming, you can stand. Three minutes and it's personal.
My name is Russell Williams, 705 South Sixth Street, Home of Louisiana, and Chief of Police for Town Hall. Councilwoman, give that off. We cannot just take that number time running fast. What this is, is a, is a request that I placed to be on the agenda on the thirteenth this month. I attempted to contact the mayor on several occasions to the office and no matter what, he didn't leave a message. I just called and asked to speak to you and tell me you wasn't in. So I figured we'd finally meet at the council meeting. I requested this because there's a policy in proceedings over here that I need to go and make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. I'd just like to know, I talked to Mr. Patel yesterday. Why do you place that on the agenda? I've also been asking to hire a part-time police officer for about four months now. That's not been heard by the council or the hiring board. Ms. Mozik's on the hiring board. She's yet to be interviewed. I set the date to interview. I requested trial from the city clerk on your last trial when we went to Baton Rouge on the night of the tenth. Ms. Foster was only able to tell me that she didn't have anything. I got your trial request, but it's not filled out. It's got your name on it and the amount of money that you need. No description. I get a letter from Mr. Patel that it's for legal. A legal matter. I've talked to some councils, they don't have no legal matter involving Town Hall or Baton Rouge. So, what I ask Mr. Patel is, is Town Funds sent you to Baton Rouge? The reason for going is public. What you discuss while you're there with an attorney or whatever is private. I also requesting information on the health care. Being a hundred as hell out of my check and everybody in the Town Hall includes health care for Blue Cross and Blue Shield and then the town pays a check for Town Funds. That's also a public. I'm not asking for anything to do with the person's health plan or what their name is. There's nothing private about the check that's being written. Of information from the, from the health care provider that's checks for being received way later than the month. April the twenty-ninth, one check will receive for the month of April. So that's why it was, that was why our insurance was canceled. I got another lawsuit, life insurance was canceled because of lack of payment. Our retirement's been in question three months later. I'm in the process of getting all that so I can bring that to your attention. But, when I asked to be on the council, I mean, on the agenda is to discuss business and you failed to put me on the last two times that I requested. Is there a different amount than how you go about to be placed on the agenda so we can discuss business?
Well, I'll make a motion that Chief Mills be put on the agenda. There's, that's no reason why he can't be on the agenda.
I'll second.
Because everything needs to be, everything needs to come out and we need to have everything in the open. And I, I just believe that we, we have got to get God into everything. We've all got to be working together. And as Proverbs twelfth chapter, the first verse says, "He who hates correction is stupid." That's the New King James Version. And I don't want to be in that territory. So I want as much corrected as we can and I just think everybody needs to be heard. We need to get everything together and what can we do about everything?
I give you a comment of it. I understand that two-thirds of the councils don't vote for me to talk about it and we can't discuss it. I've also asked for this part-time office. Myself and the mayor had a meeting. I think Ms., uh, Mozik was there and you was there. Every police officer, every employee of the Town Hall has two-hundred hours of vacation leave. That's almost unheard of anywhere. That's five weeks for the police. If you do the math, seventeen dollars, that's twenty-four thousand dollars enough for time line out and I just spend. I asked the mayor, was the budget? She said no. So I'm gonna be twenty-four thousand over budget in the first place. I've had, I had a hundred and thirty-some hours last week of overtime. A hundred and two of it to cover vacation. This week, I'm gonna have the same thing. If I don't get some help and get some part-time people, that was the mayor and Alicia Mitchell's suggestion is get some part-time people to take the position of full-time police officer when they're off and pay my second rate and start paying the guys overtime. I still not, four weeks, five weeks, I still not even been able to be heard or set up a date for him to be interviewed.
Well, I would make a motion on the floor that we just in a timely manner now hire a little too high if this is the piece seconded and passed.
I think the council has the authority to hire police officers on my recommendation. I think the hiring board was merely put in place to review. Ms. Mozik has had possession of that property or that information for
Well, this is been long enough for and, and so I wanted to say that he has it in the agenda.
So those three minutes are up and I will tell Ms. Mozik she's out of she's caused the hiring board to be
Actually, there's a motion on the floor. It's been set and it needs to be heard on
That's not the case.
It was.
Now, it's not the case, you have to amend the agenda.
That's what she did.
She asked for that.
So it has to be motion to amend the agenda, make it on the floor. But I was thinking, Ms. Mozik, well, Ms. Mozik, she spoke the last time and if you remember. Her last meeting, she stated, you know, she get the information she requested, she'd be more than happy to have a meeting to be hired.
But we can't.
She has not received any information that she's requested from the police chief to hire.
Okay. There's more than amend to own this.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay, what have they said? What did they ask and what have they said?
You got to speak with Ms. Mozik, she's not here. You have to
Make a motion to amend this, and this is discussed.
Well, I'll make
Yes, I'm getting it because of you. You're not going to interrupt this meeting? No, no, you're not. Go ahead, Ms. Corlette.
But we do need to amend, we need to get on timely with doing this and we have been way too long in, in coming up to hiring. This has been approximately the first year. Well, how are we gonna expect him to not have overtime if we won't let him hire anybody?
He and Ms. Mozik were speaking about that. So I, I suggested you
Well, she's not the only one of
I suggested you comment, Ms. Mozik, and tell that also. And that's why she's over the hiring committee.
Cause there's four of us here.
Go ahead.
When I make a comment.
Yes, sir.
I am on the police hiring committee and I helped manage it as far as Second thing I want to say. If you got a ten-aged kid, daughter, son, whatever going up and down the streets and home and Russell has to hire someone on the overtime pageant with children's treats and he stops a ten-aged gang shooting a dr, a, a rich, a drug dealer. My God, why are you fussing about overtime? I, I don't understand. I do not understand.
Well, I just believe we need to move on and hire the amount of part-time people we need to eliminate the overtime.
Are you representing, you have to choose another representative, don't you?
I have, I have, but I can be, I guess if she is.
Are you, you on the board?
So there's three of us, there's some there.
Well, no, only two of you may. I think you have to choose another representative. But she's on the board and he's on the board, so it's on the two. So I would urge you to, uh, have a name to place on the board and speaking
But for what reason can't we not amend the agenda? There's four officers here and go on with
Go on with hiring.
Just amend.
They asked to go to the hiring. That was the, that was where I got here. That was me, that was, that was, you all.
We have done, we have done that.
Mayor appointed the law chief. The elected chief of police has the authority to make recommendations to the council. However, an appointed chief does not, that was amended in two thousand and eleven. If you're attorney here, he can put the law to you. I can go get it. The law was amended in two thousand and eleven. The elected chiefs of police do have the authority and I can get you the statute of law to make recommendations to the council. The policy is really a policy put forth by the, by the attorneys at that time and by the council. But you cannot set a policy in place that violates state laws. State law supersedes policy procedure. You can't make a policy that's illegal.
Okay, good. When I got here in May two thousand and ten, y'all developed some kind of policy with mayor knowing y'all you voted against it. Well, it was passed. And I was in, in, attorney calling and we script. So I'm just following the script.
We can amend the agenda.
You can amend the agenda, discuss it if you have but you have to have a jury vote. All four people have been free to amend the agenda.
Okay. Did you agree to amend it?
Uh, I agreed to amend the agenda to add it on there so if you want to discuss it, we can move on with this, mayor. Add it on there.
They just can get on with this.
That is the hiring. That is the hiring, the hiring. We have to go to the hiring committee. We have to go to the hiring committee. Hiring committee has to discuss it.
It's already
He's not, he's just, he's asking to be put on the agenda to discuss.
To discuss it? That's not, that's a mistake. Okay, so
We're on hiring. We're on hiring when he, all he asked for us to be and to be on the agenda to discuss it. Would you, would you hire
Okay, so we can, we can amend the agenda to, to let him discuss it so we can move on with this. So we can so we can move on.
We just need to get on with this.
You already discussed it, right? You already said what you had to say?
It's too far.
Okay, so we already said what you had to say, so
This part of the hiring part goes, but I got about seven things on the, of, that I requested to be on the agenda. Cause she's, she's amended the whole agenda to allow me to be placed on the agenda on the six things that I requested to discuss is, is one motion. The other motion would be to discuss hiring somebody. The mayor continued to say that it's gotta go before the hiring board. And I'm sorry, I left my phone in the car, but I can, I can assure you that the law was amended in two thousand and eleven and give me the authority to bring it before y'all in the town charter and the town office to see to this.
He got, he got amend the agenda.
I made a motion to amend the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we all vote for it.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to amend the agenda. We have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we go on with the thing about the hiring or any of the other things that comes up on here to discuss them, get them out, find out what we can do to
Okay, second. All in favor of state aye? Any opposed? Now, we're going to make a motion to amend the agenda to add which items?
You got a comment, cause she said about the LA only way. And which item?
Which items we gonna add?
A lot of items. I work five days.
Here's a couple of ways to change one of them.
Which items we gonna add?
One, two, three, four, I don't know. I don't know about the rest of them. Y'all pick at what y'all
We're on Ricky's cover, one half. We pretty much discussed five, uh, Councilman Wade.
We pretty much discussed five policies about Ricky, didn't we?
Number five.
Oh, okay, so you only have four.
Well, I have just five more. We really, I mean, the discussion part, if you consider the discussion, what the mayor says, what she said, oh, number five, about the possibility to hire a part-time police officer. I mean, we can, we can stay at the minute and discuss it. She says that we gotta go before the hiring board and that's, that's the last word said and we need to get the hiring board together and we need to have this meeting and we need to get someone to hire.
Well, I do believe that the four of the town councils, I think that we should, that that should supersede the months of four of those votes. So let's go on
The town, the town policy says that children have the authority to hire
The hiring committee is set to hire until
Well, they make the recommendation, right?
The four, they just recommend.
Until they bring the recommendation, we're not going forward because that's what I was given the father.
The town council, they have their own.
Okay, so we'll definitely, I know we're finally looking at hiring and that, one, two, three, and four, and six, we can decide.
I'll say the amount of five, one and one would be a good time for the hiring committee to sit down.
Yeah, I always go see I always go see, you get to go with her and do that. And that's, that's a good, if you're redundant now.
But you, you mean four town council members that are free don't have the authority over one person?
You selected, you voted on five people for a hiring, hiring request. It's a hiring hand, hand from the hiring committee.
Has anybody got a couple of town officers?
Okay. I, I need to add these items. I'm gonna go ahead and on with the rest of the meeting. So we're gonna add what items we're gonna add and we're gonna proceed. We're not gonna discuss about items we're gonna add. Let's add items and then discuss. Which items we're gonna discuss? Which items we're gonna add, let's move forward. This is not, this is getting very informal and not professional. So let's find what we're gonna discuss and that's the, that's the back of the board, so everybody knew about it with a clear, good understanding.
All right.
All right. Now, which five we're gonna put on here? If not, that motion was sitting there.
Just put all the ones on there.
I need a motion. I'll make a motion. I'll say. I'm saying, all in favor of state aye? Any opposed?
You don't, you don't have the information in front of you. At least I have information in front of me. I don't need to, but we can discuss it socially. Just any opposed comments?
My name's Susan here, I live at two thirty-one North Main, Home of Louisiana. Have been serving on the town council in the past. I can tell you that the town council has the authority to do away with hiring committees. They have the authority to hire. The only authority a committee has is what this board gives them. They do not supersede y'all. Y'all have the ultimate authority. Y'all can do away with them tonight. You can override them tonight. You don't have to listen to them. You've given them authority. Only authority they have is what's been given by y'all. I just want to clarify that.
Okay, any other public comments? If not, we're gonna move forward with our agenda.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, next, on the agenda, we have to approve property acquisition. This is laundry, resolution thirteen zero zero six.
Resolution thirteen zero six to the city of Fort Worth Parish, Quail River. Is authorized under case two. I have a agreement, any amendments thereto to Quail Parish.
Have a motion?
I'll submit.
Second. Second. So second, all in favor of state aye? Any opposed? So that motion carries. Next, we have approval of resolution thirteen zero zero five, resolution adopting assistance participation plan for the C P D. This is going to my favor, this probably.
Okay. I'm ready for that. Probably doesn't even get, why don't I hold it?
Resolution thirteen zero five for the Democratic Party to obtain community building and bought grant funds to benefit lower water and homeowners. For as Louisiana Division Administration of Parks that serves citizens to participate in parks and events. Therefore, we have resolved that the following system is taking plans to offer to the town hall to space the planning for the national investment in the C P D program.
Uh, Ms. Popps wants to plan, I'm minded, you know, they will come. She's gonna come on June, June the twentieth. And that's why our committee of block, um, grants. And these are resolutions we have to pass to be in compliance for the new, for approval of a lot of those grants. I'll make that motion. Make a motion.
I second it.
Motion made by Councilwoman Sanford, second by Councilwoman Jake, in favor of state by saying aye? Any opposed? So that motion carries. Next, we have approved official general for the Town Hall. I have a motion.
I think we want that we, uh, uh, he, Anthony, we accept official general.
All in favor of state aye? Any opposed?
Now, my understanding was we were gonna rotate one year but we're gonna use one and one year was gonna use the other. So let's be fair.
Uh, who said that? So that was, that was discussed, that wasn't approved.
Well, I don't, that, that, I don't understand.
That's your, so you, now, I never voted for it. So we have one for you, one? All in favor? Say aye? Any opposed? Just aye. I'll call it.
I'm gonna say I'm gonna try to understand what you do, city. And I can't give you a
I'm sorry.
So you changing, are you thinking about changing the official general from hands of President Calvert?
No, I, I asked for a motion, the motion was to keep hands. Ms. Jake can make a motion to keep hands. Councilwoman Wade, second.
Well, I'm gonna vote another question. Simply, you have all people working in home, getting home attached to, from home. So that should be a
So that's a title. That's two, two? Are you voting aye as well?
I'm voting aye.
Well, I'm gonna vote, uh, in Florida's motion. So it carries three to two. Three comes out, three to two.
Now, that would have been a fight coming around.
I, I don't have any fight yet, but last year when we discussed doing this that was said we were gonna use one fight for one year and another fight for the next year. So to be fair, I think that what we should do?
Okay, next we have so hands of general official. Next, we got a policy on individual rent, Town Hall property.
Mayor, my question is that the policy on individual rent Town Hall property, Town Hall park playground within duty charge administration admission by activities being held on sale property for personal gain. This is a visit back some years ago when Mr. Calvert was here and if my memory stands to be corrected sometime. If we not discussed that individual capital gain unless it was a nonprofit charitable event, a nonprofit organization, some type of political endeavor that an individual could not bring anything along to the town and charge money to attend. Is that correct or incorrect?
I'm not sure.
And you're in favor? You vote for policy?
No, I don't vote for policy.
You did vote for it, we just, we just discussed it.
I'm not gonna tell you yes or no on any of these agenda items. I have not briefed and looked for it. So for instance, if you wanna know about any of these policies, you have to speak with the city attorney. I'm just gonna listen. I'm gonna actually go to the head attorney. So you can speak.
Policy on my responsibility to sign off on any written property. At one time, y'all had a, a form, an individual had to sign. They had to tell who the responsible parties were, what time that activity was gonna start, what time that activity was gonna stop. Then it was, at my discretion, if I waived police officers or if I used police officers and the charge went to the individual that held the function or the group that held the function. I haven't had a request in some time. City Hall's been rented, city hall's been rented. Nothing's come across my desk. The last thing that come across my desk in a week, one week, a little girl from somewhere, six-year-old, ten-year-old birthday party. Y'all send me that? I signed off, but I didn't think that had police on a birthday party on Friday, five o'clock, nine o'clock. And the second one was, uh, ghetto cowboy when they came to town to rent the city hall and I refused to sign that. Since that time, I have not had any request or any police security on any town property that has been renovated. So I wanna know what the policy said, if there was one. The other policy was the procedure for the, for the prospective hire for anybody for a Town Hall owner other than the police officer. Are you familiar with that policy, mayor? You're not?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say any policies without the meaning with what I'm not. All your questions we have to be given to the city attorney for clarification.
Well, mayor, I'll tell you the policy says for Town Hall owner in the handbook that I've got in the past twenty years, it says that the, the head of that department would make a recommendation to the board, to the board council, to the mayor. After he goes to interview, then the board would have the right. If the person that you was looking at, the mayor had a problem with it, not personal business, then you and the department head would sit down and discuss that. But that's been in policy forever. And I'm sorry, I don't have one. I thought maybe Ms. Lisa might have one, she can give real quick for that. But if you don't know, I'll, I'll direct that later. The fourth on the agenda that I requested was, do you know what the policy procedure says in the Town Policy Procedure on any person who is hired by a Town Hall owner and paid salary? I've discussed this with you in the past and also discussed it with Louisiana Department of Labor. Do you know what that policy says? That policy says that any person sowed for Town Hall owner will be paid at the rate of one-third of their salary for every hour, for every hour worked over forty. Now, the Department of Labor says that's illegal, you can't do that. There's still time to have. Thus, I mean, one of the three criteria. Three criteria being have the authority, the power five. The second criteria being use twenty percent of their time as an administrator. And the third criteria is to pass policy and procedure. Now, I know the Town Hall owner's got two people on salary. I don't think neither of the two hire fire use twenty percent of their time as administrators or pass policy and procedure. According to the Labor Board and the young lady that come here to me, we haven't got a detail on that, but I, you know, I just wanna know if you knew what the policy said how it was supposed to pay people on salary? Any need to write? The sixth one is, is directed towards you. I brought two purchase orders in last month to be signed to purchase something called patrol car. Both purchase orders were signed, was not signed for the, for the lowest bid on the job. One for Thomas Sanders and one for Ward Service Center. So my question to you was, would you please explain to me the reason for going with the highest bid opposed to the cheapest person doing the work on our, on our bid? That hurts my budget. That money is put in my budget to spend and if I'm gonna spend it wisely, as I would as a businessman,[1620.80] That hurts my budget, that money is put in my budget to spend, and if I'm gonna spend it wisely, as I would as a businessman, I'm gonna try to buy the cheapest route that I can go. But you signed both purchase orders for the higher of the two. Can, does Mr. Patel know that, or are you gonna be a pretend?
Tell him to take it out.
Okay. My last request, did y'all see the last page attached to it? I've had a, I've asked individuals in home, I had tried to start up a reserve, an auxiliary police department, we talked about that one time, uh, we were some concerned about the liability, I've asked Mr. Patel if he would talk to some of the larger cities that, that have, uh, reserves, auxiliary police officers. And so I've had a couple individuals ask me about, you know, we started the citizens on patrol program, they're not police, they're not informed, they come out and ride with the police and see firsthand what we do.
Well, we done this a long time ago, and it's worth trying.
What, what?
I got, I got, I have a question, is that, is that legal for us to do that, is there liability with, for the individual that's hiring?
That's why, that's why I asked Mr. Patel to do some research, like he hadn't gotten back with me. Of course, you know, purpose of the program. The purpose of the program is to really to have more people on, I wonder if there'd be one in the car with, with any certified officer, they'd be two sets of eyes seeing what's going on. I think it would be a sign, it's some type of duty or a separate control. But they would really be far as to help all us in parades, funerals, if we have big funerals, basketball games, football games, just have more people that would be seen, you know, when we have large functions, large playgrounds on the weekends, where they can be there doing that too. Look for other places what's going on, they, they would have a part in it.
Is it volunteer, strictly volunteer? What about the safety of these things?
Well, I mean, the safety of that individual?
That's what I'm.
The safety of what we use on citizen patrol? I mean, their, their safety would be just like our safety, when you handle these events, or they won't be identified in security. They, they'd be identified as a reserve, well, if we go to the reserve, there's also not citizen on patrol, that's why I didn't hear Mr. Patel, but I wanted to break before the council to discuss this, if it seems something that we can go forward with. Basically, the reserve office shot down because of the fact that it may open a window for some more liability or something worth it now, if that individual was to get hurt or somebody.
Wouldn't it?
I think it would fall back to the town.
But wouldn't that be the same if you had an individual riding, I mean, doing what you wanna do, wouldn't it?
I'm discussing, Mr. Patel.
What if they get hurt, what if somebody get hurt?
I think Mr. Patel had to answer that, like, if the mayor's telling me he's gotta answer my question, I can't answer him, I'm not an attorney, I know other cities have it, and towns have it.
So are you gonna, are you gonna, are you gonna top, sit down with Mr. Patel and discuss this and ask him?
I wanted to juggle this with what I was trying to do, and then I can't sit down and talk with him. And once we can, I mean, we can get some information from larger towns, and then we can kind of outline our program like their program is.
And possibly there is some type of a thing that the person signs that frees you of liability, some of the things you write.
I'd have to get him, if I tell Mr. Patel that I've discussed it with y'all, and y'all told him to do research, I'm sure he'll research.
Well, I think it would be, to use, we used to do that.
I'm sorry, that's a reserve, the last four, five police officers that came here, came from reserves, uh, I've been here almost twenty years, and, and, and we've had them up until the last, four years, we've had a reserve police department. And that's also where you build your department from, from your reserve, has been here six, eight, ten months.
So would these individuals have to have some kind of training?
Yeah, we were trained, and we would, we would, we would follow the guidelines with Boj, with Mendon, or when Webster Parish has got a lot of all program, they've got reserve programs, I could give it to sheriff and see exactly what they do, they've got trainers there, we've got guys that can train here certified, we got certified trainers that wait and train with us, and sort of, and train them in certain deals that they would actually be certified in. Now, they wouldn't be certified in the toxicology, they wouldn't be certified in that sort of stuff, but they'd be certified in handcuffing techniques and stuff for that next day, just minor stuff that they would need to know. Now, if we are more, then we have to go a step further, and then they'd be certified with the farm. They would have handcuffs, mace, gray nose, just the basics, the basic, just like when I started, I didn't have guns, I didn't have mace, I had a pair of tennis shoes and a blue pair of bricks.
I understand, you have the individual that, that wants to do this.
I've had, I've had a number of them, I've actually had a number of, that wanna be reserved.
They, okay, is it, is it something personal in this, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, why they would wanna do this?
Uh, I wouldn't think a couple of, a couple of retired from Wade, who just kinda wanna.
Is that age group, age group?
We don't have a navy on police, I mean, four, you know, I mean.
You don't want to do armed?
No, I mean, they need to be twenty-one, yes, I'm sorry, but they need to be, they need to be legalized.
Well, a lot of people just, just like to do it.
Why, so I'm saying, I mean, yeah, I think that, you know, you don't, to your ask.
Well, y'all give me permission to get him to do some research on it, and I'll do some more research, maybe at the next council meeting I can bring that package for y'all, with some, with some answers, and Mr. Patel would have the legal answers worked out, and what I'm gonna do to follow the town.
Would we need to make a motion to do this?
I'm just asking permission to do it.
I'm gonna, you, you may, but I put citizens patrol in the old edition to the next agenda, I already told her, you just wanna bring it that time and make the motion, yeah?
Just go, just, just.
You can bring it back at that time, and you can make, and you have to make the added adjustments, whatever you wanna do, make the motion.
Get done and take care of it.
They give them, they give them a lot of time to do everything. Uh, Superintendent Wells, Superintendent Young, you have any comments or any requirements, everything okay, thank you. You okay? Who else?
I have one more question, just another question. As much time as that was putting, for research on the mayor, and all of issue, policies and stuff. Can I, as a councilman, ask you to put that same analogy into our review? The long analogy you gave, the best work that you can come up with, ready before the council and stuff, but me to you, I'm just asking, and we get that same. I mean, we have a lot of unsolved crime, crime unit stuff going on.
Really?
And it's nothing, I'm just saying, I, I put, I put it, I put it as much emphasis on my job.
I'm not saying that you don't, I'm just saying I'm working that case, as, if you wanna consider this me working the case, I'm running up working states, I mean, as far as against the mayor, or, uh, any wrongdoing inside city hall.
Uh, but I'm gonna be honest with you, you asked a question, this has taken my life, my, everywhere I can go, that question is asking me about what's going on, twenty years later, and I'm sure she gets the same stuff, I'm sure you get it. I can't even lodge in home, that, that I'm not discussed. I go to Sweetport, off of Lake, anywhere I'm at, that's, I mean, it's just, and if my son way about to go, I'm gonna be, that's all people gonna talk about. So, to answer your question, that has taken a big part of my life, two thousand thirteen, for a town hall, probably one of the worst years I've ever been up here.
That counts.
So, until all this stuff comes to a head, I'm gonna do what I've done on the street, but I make the mayor a promise, and I never told my dad, tell me something, don't, don't never ride a chicken can cash. I told him, regardless of the police department decided, or fallen murder, I wouldn't do it, and I'm gonna eat that.
In spite of?
In spite of that, that is, that is, that, this ban on the police department has taken over my life to keep this police department, and keep the police department going. I got guys on the streets doing their job, and we continue to work every day, I have a lot of time on my every business, and like I told you, I'm not gonna let a chick that can't cash, I promise y'all, I'm gonna look into it, and I'm gonna do it, but I still. I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the best job that I can do, it's all I have, it's the material and the equipment that I got to go through, I promise you that, I personally, thank you.
I, I, Chief Bill, I have a question that I like to ask you, uh, you know, we talked several times.
We have?
My question is to you now, and you know, I'm not opposed to hiring this other individual, I already told you this.
You did.
But my question is to you now, on the officers that you have in place, is there any way possible we could get that information there?
Officers that are working?
The, the ones that's employed now.
Well, I mean, to, to be perfectly honest with you, police officers is a custodian of records, Lisa's got every, she's got every record that those police officers got that I have on file.
Certification and all that, that's what I'm saying, I, I didn't know.
When Ms., I'm telling you, when, when Ms. Rosie requested that information, she requested it to me in a form, as a public record. Every record that I've requested from Ms. Rosie has been, has the, under the duty of the chief of police. The council has said that I'm wanting, that I'm doing an investigation, I'm doing an investigation, I was just trying to look into the, the, the spending of the, of the money for the town hall, I have paid for every sheet of paper that I got. And I don't think she's no better, so she's no different, if I paid for it.
The last request came from that council.
Well, she, she brought it, she brought it as a package to the council.
Does not have any records.
There's no records in city hall of the police department?
Does not have any records.
Well, whoever the record keeper is here.
In our last meeting, we, we voted for the chief attorney with the records that he has, his officer, to get him to the hiring committee, and we give him a report, as of this day, we have not received a record.
All those officers are hired, all except the one that's in question to hire as a part-time officer. All the other officers that, that I've hired have been before the council, all the paperwork has been given to the council prior to being hired.
No, no, not, not.
I'm saying.
People hired that didn't have any paperwork.
What I, what I'm asking, what, what my question is, what I'm asking you, I'm asking about their, their, uh, credentials, I'm asking about their certification, and I know in the past we asked you, but it's, you brought it to us.
I did, all, all I knew was you hired.
I'm just asking, 'cause I think they supposed to do this like every year?
Well, I think the policy said that I'm supposed to do an evaluation every year.
Evaluation every year, and those records, oh, y'all employees of the town hall records ought to be updated, and then, and his records are not there.
I'll ask you to know why she don't have it, because.
Because you can't give it to them.
Every time.
We sent your request, and you did not, did not give it to the request.
All, all the officers has been certified, we take duplicate copies and send the package to Shinobi.
So Shinobi, if I can get a warning, Shinobi can have.
She should have every piece of paper, except now, except any and all confidential files, and the confidential files stay in my office.
I'm not talking, I don't wanna say, I'm talking, I'm talking about the certification.
They, that, Shinobi should have copies of all of them.
I'm talking about certification.
Any, any, any police institution material, she asked a question, can I finish answering? Any police system material, as far as background checks, is merely that, their police system, those are not private. And the police officer again, on any complaint that has been brought before, the mayor has taken the complaints over the past three years, any complaint that has been investigated, any officer that was disciplined, has the right by policy to have his personnel file purged. Okay, so those will not be there.
I mean, in the past, you never gave us that, I'm just talking about what we got, what we can see in the past.
Everything that's, that I can, as far as, should be there.
Last month, is what he's supposed to.
That's what I'm talking about, I'm, I don't have to see nobody personal, nothing.
It, it should be, Shinobi should have copies of all of them, ladies.
And the first one that is paid, then will have a folder, come, you have to know that, have, vacation, have, you got to have everybody hold everybody working, don't you?
We supposed to be having all the employees, just not the police.
Well, how are you paying them?
What you mean, how are you?
How are you paying them if you don't have all the information on them?
I have that information, we don't have the information requested that we passed the last meeting.
The information that was requested was their credentials, when they went to school, when they went to the academy, are they post-certified?
The letter, you did not provide, and the paperwork is over in your office, and that's where you keep it, and you have not provided.
Right.
Now, if you're gonna tell, if you're gonna tell all of it, tell all of them.
I'll tell them.
No, my question, my, my question is, now, I'm talking to you, I'm talking, my question is, why, because I know you have had a problem with it in the past before, 'cause you brought it to us.
And I'm always wrong to everybody that we're hiring, she's asking for everybody that is working there now, I found it kind of odd that she didn't.
Well, if you wanna sign that paycheck, you might wanna know what's, she can go and look at everybody else's file in here, everybody else's writing, everybody else's file.
What she was really wanting was a personnel file, but she was told she couldn't have, and she was asked to, to change her.
You can't speak on her, you can't speak on what she, you can't speak on what she wants.
Okay, I, I'll speak to Shinobi tomorrow, any and all certificates that the police have.
I'm not talking about personnel, I'm talking about certification, 'cause I think if they're not, if they're not certified, I don't think they need to be hired, I don't think they need to be working. I don't think they need to be working, if they have, if they're not certified, they have went to school, have gone to school, gone to training, I don't think they need to be working, that's what I'm saying, we've talked about this before, that's all I'm asking, the rest of it.
Well, I would like to make a motion to hire this part-time person, so you don't have to keep him with, with overtime.
I, I have to go through the hiring thing, that's what I was told, let's, let's, all city attorney tales be different, I'm not, I'm not.
Can go above.
I'm not gonna carry out.
Cancel person.
Not gonna.
I don't think that's legal.
Well, then at the next meeting, we need to change that, we change that at the next meeting, then we go and then we rock. Something's already voted, that's how, that's how it's gonna be, I'm moving on to the mayor's report.
Oh, great.
Next we have the mayor's report.
Could I ask for my comments?
Yes, sir.
If you have an individual from home or wherever, that's willing to serve in the police department, willing to live in line, every day, with the terror crimes, and do what we have to do, and we all, say God bless it, calm, freedom of world, check it back, and let Russell do it, all of them. The second thing is, after that. But you have someone willing to serve on our police department in home, and we need to consider, what we do is have to make, Mr. Collier, he's on the committee, I'm on the committee, uh, Patricia, I think you're on, I don't know.
I'm, I'm not on it, but I just.
We need to consider all of that, but what we got to say.
I have somebody on my.
We're gonna take them, the council had to take them.
I'm hoping.
What we need to do is unite as Christians and citizens of Humble Louisiana, and go forward, that's all we got to do.
Thank you. Our collections for our water. Our collections for May two thousand thirteen, our water collections were ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and six thousand seventy-three cents. Uh, our sales tax collection was eighty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars fifty-three cents, and our property tax collection was one thousand, twenty-one dollars eighty-four cents. And in the midst of everything that's been going on, we've been approved for four grants, that this town desperately needs to fix the infrastructure and the buildings around here. And, uh, Jackie, I will give you all of this information as I, as I read it. Uh, the two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, the LGAAP grant, uh, approved for thirty-five thousand dollars for gas structure damage to existing town hall complex. Um, as you know, we have the, the roof upstairs, comfort room upstairs has a hole in it, and that's, this money's additional to go with the other money, that's gonna move all these tiles, replace all the decking, and put everything back like new. And also, grab this room so we can start our council chambers, okay, this is just some of the money to help do that, that's in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Next we have another thirty-five thousand dollars fund, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, community water enrichment fund. This is for the removal of the water tank, elevated water tank at Joe Michael's, uh, memorial park, and the engineers are anxious to start and wait for that money outside, so so far, there's a total of seventy thousand dollars.
Start a date.
The engineers are gonna bring us today, all these start dates, I'm just, I just got these, I got some calls from the Capitol, and, uh, they got some letters, and I just wanna notify the council, as well, I'm, I'm gonna find out this conference for you. Next we have the cabinet overlay of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this is to, once again, replace the decking and the clay tiles of the, of the city hall, where the leaks can also start on our council chambers in the bay. And lastly, we have the twenty-seven thousand dollars, and this also goes for the building, and the, and this from the LGAAP, so this is total of. I think it's two forty-seven, I got a picture of one, I think it's right, but I think, we got two sixty-seven? I think it's two forty. It's two forty, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars that have been awarded since our last council meeting, which I think this is much more important. Fixing these buildings, working on these infrastructures, trying to replace water tanks and elevating water towers, opposed to coming in here, with me, about the small things that are going on. We're here to provide adequate, adequate facilities to the citizens, and we don't even discuss grants, you announce a grant, it can be twenty-eight dollars, you go over to the platform room. You have heights that are older than the nineteen-sixties, haven't been repaired, nobody cares, that's not, that's not the focus, and I think, I don't think if that's not gonna be the focus, then why are we here?
You know, I'm saying, you can put a contest wrong without, and I don't think so. If everything, if everything is running. Even if somebody did, everybody is working together, we can accomplish much more.
No one ever asked about the grants, when the last night you ran about a grant, did you have a thing?
I'll ask about a grant, worry about the grant for the police department, USDA grant, do we got that two thousand dollars match grant yet? You did, a thousand dollar worth of work, a hundred and fifty dollars.
Speak to the grant living, email, I, I, I may, I may say something on that.
My roof leaking, I got mold in the office, what about that?
But you know, you know, I said, I said, I know the person that sits on the grant meeting, and we had a meeting, you was invited to the meeting. You didn't show.
I said.
So they, you didn't tell, you, come on, come on, you know, we've been working on this, we've been working on this for a while.
Did not attend the grant.
The police department is not excluded.
What?
Me, the police department is not excluded.
Not, not, I'm talking, great deal. She did not bring a proposal, that means.
I met him at the office, they came back over there, was looking at the town with a handicap accessible grant for this department.
So move the second, y'all just go sit at the second, after Michael has the motion, councilway is gonna go to the jury, second. I think, I, I think, I think, that's, that's not a way, this is, you gotta, you just can't let it go on the ride, you gotta. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta.